Call a meeting to order. Bob, is there any changes to the agenda?
No. You have seen to adopt the agenda as you got it.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is now official. Need approval of the January 28, 2016 minutes. Are there any changes or additions, corrections? Need to know at this time?
So moved.
Second? Motion second to approve the minutes of January 28, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Any council members in the room that would like to speak?
Counselor.
Seeing none?
Counselor Lady Murphy.
Oh, Counselor Lady Murphy. I'm sorry.
I'll speak with my items for now.
Okay. Okay. Bob Adams for deferral or withdrawal.
Is that on? Yes. Okay, there are several items for deferral, starting with item number one. This is case number 2015 S dash 001 R dash 001. This is a request to amend the subdivision regulations of Nashville and Davidson County, adopted on March 9, 2006, and last amended on January 9, 2014. This item is being recommended for deferral to the April 28 Planning Commission meeting. Next item on the deferral list, item 2A. This is a request for a minor plan amendment to the Major and Collector Street Plan for properties located at 3606 and 3622 West End Avenue. And that is being requested for deferral to the February 25 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note on that that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item's item 2B. This is a request for final plat approval to create 27 lots and dedicate easements on property located at 3606 and 3622 West End Avenue. The staff recommendation is to defer to the February 25 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on 2B as well. Next item is item number three, 2015 SP dash 103 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from IR to SP zoning for property located at 4101 Charlotte Avenue to permit a mixed-use development with up to 10,000 square feet of non-residential uses and up to 400 residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 24 Planning Commission meeting. And Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item three. Sorry, I've got... Okay. The next item on the deferral list is item number five, 2016 SP dash 002 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from RM 20 to SP zoning for a portion of property located at 1408 Jackson Street to permit a digital sign. The recommendation is to withdraw at the applicant's request. Next item's item six, case 2016 Z dash 006 PR dash 001. This is a request to rezone from AR 2A to MUL zoning for a portion of property located at 1010 Camilla Lane. The staff recommendation is to defer to the March 10 Planning Commission meeting and to convert this to an SP zoning. Next item is item eight, case 2007 SP dash 103 dash 001. This is a request to amend the Harpeth Springs SP District for property located at 7960 Coley-Davis Road to permit 64 townhomes where 98 townhomes were previously approved. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 25 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note on that that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Item number nine, 2016 SP dash 008 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from AR 2A to SP zoning for property located at 7224 Old Burkett Road to permit 99 single-family lots. The staff recommendation is to defer to the February 25 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note on item nine that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Item number 11, 2016 SP dash 014 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from CS to SP zoning for a portion of property located at 7435 Old Hickory Boulevard to permit heavy equipment sales and service and all uses permitted by the CS zoning district, with some exceptions. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 25 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 12, case 2016 SP dash 015 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from IR to SP zoning for property located at Amy Lynn Drive Unnumbered to permit all uses under IR zoning with some exceptions and to permit a concrete batch plant, manufacturing of concrete, tile, and brick, associated outdoor storage of river-transported materials and goods. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 10 Planning Commission meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item number 16, case number 85 dash 85 P dash 003. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of the Brentwood Commons Putt Overlay District on property located at 2000 American General Way to permit an office development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 25 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note on that that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Those are all the items on the deferral list.
But I also need to recuse myself when I'm there.
Okay, on number 16.
Number 16.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you've heard a request to defer these or withdraw items 1, 2A, 2B, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 16. So a motion to defer those items.
So moved.
We've got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent.
Items on consent. Before I get to the items on consent, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. Starting with item four, case 2015 SP dash 105 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 6 to SP for properties located at 122 and 124 Osceola Avenue to permit up to eight residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item seven, case 2016 S dash 011 dash 001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 906 Young's Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item's item 10, case 2016 SP dash 009 dash 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 6 to SP zoning for property located at 1116 Sigler Street to permit up to five units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item 13, case 2016 Z dash 013 PR dash 001. This is a request to rezone from SP to AR 2A zoning for properties located at 6950 Charlotte Pike and Cabot Drive Unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 14 is case number 2016 Z dash 014 PR dash 001. This is a request to rezone from IR to MULA zoning for property located at 4100 Charlotte Avenue. And the staff recommendation is to approve. And then, under other business, employee contract amendment for Doug Sloan. And recommendation is to approve. And we did have a request to remove item 18 from consent, but I will note that that is not a public hearing... Sorry, not a public hearing item. So do you want me to read that one into the record or have that one removed from the consent?
If you would, read that into the record.
Number 18 is a contract between the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce and the Nashville Davidson County Metro Planning Commission, acting on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO for communications and outreach through the development of the Nashville Region's vital signs. And vital signs, the chamber will assist the MPO in identifying regional trends and issues which relate to the transportation planning process and engage stakeholders and the public by creating unique opportunities for meaningful input to inform the transportation planning process. And staff is recommending approval of item 18. And item 22 is to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Commissioners, items on consent, number item 4, 7, 10, 13, 14, 17, 18, and 22. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would... I want to want to remove it. Well, I guess I do want to remove consent because I like a little bit more discussion on number 18. I realize it's not a public hearing, but I would like to have a little more discussion.
Let me take that one off. So items 4, 7, 10, 13, 14, 17, and 22, all in favor? Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've got item 15 and item 18 then on the... There's public hearing for item 15 and no public hearing for item 18.
Thank you. Item number 15 is a zone change request for 1300 Pinock Avenue. The request is to rezone from RS 5 to MUNA. The property is highlighted in red. This is located in East Nashville at the corner of Douglas Avenue and Pinock Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. Current zoning is RS 5. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood evolving. This policy is intended to create and enhance urban neighborhoods that fit in with the general character of the existing urban neighborhoods. The resulting development pattern may have higher densities than existing urban neighborhoods. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The request is inconsistent with the goals of the T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy. The policy is a residential policy, intended to enhance urban neighborhoods with opportunities for a broader range of housing types and housing choices. Rezoning to MUNA would allow non-residential uses such as commercial, medical, and office uses, which are not consistent with the policy. Staff recommends disapproval as the rezoning is inconsistent with the land use policy.
So item is open for public hearing. It'll happen to be allowed in 10 minutes if you'd like to make a presentation. Seeing none, is anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing closed. Stuart, I'll open with you.
Well, I reviewed this, the staff recommendation and the analysis, and I agreed with it and would be happy to make a motion to approve. Staff recommendation to disapprove at the right time.
Second.
Got a motion second to disapprove. Staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So... Where's Bob Lehman?
Hey, Bob has stepped out.
Okay, that's all right. Just, I was gonna have him reread that, but whatever. You go ahead with your discussion.
Yeah, I'm not... I asked that we discuss a little bit more now because I didn't review it earlier or because I disagree with it, but I did want to... For several of us, even though we've been on before, we don't always look at these very much, and we ask the newer members, but I just wanted to ask the staff how this has been working in the past and do we anticipate any issues? And frankly, if it's not out of the order, are there any issues with the state on our work with the chamber and these issues? I follow legislation and I'm glad we have this kind of agreement, but I'm just interested in where we might be with that and what we expect for the future on this contract and the goals of this contract with the MPO.
I am. I cannot speak to that contract with the MPO as it is with the MPO and the chamber. I mean, I've seen it as well, but I would really expect that the MPO would have to speak to that.
What is our role then? I mean, it's before us to approve.
Well, so for the creation of an MPO, the MPO has to be associated with the largest local government, which they are associated with us. And then, we act as the administrative arm, if you will, of the MPO for contracting purposes. We process their contracts. They have to meet our procurement standards, and so they're compared against that. Any other requirements that the legal department wants to add to that?
I don't have anything to add. I mean, no, I think you...
At least in this case. Now, there are other times where we're working with the MPO to do projects within Davidson County, and that's very different in those... Well, this one is, of course, with the chamber, but it's a... It's not just, I don't believe it is just Davidson County. This is work that the MPO is doing with the chamber, not with our department in particular.
So this is essentially an administrative matter. We provide... Do we provide services to the MPO?
Well, if... The services we provide to the MPO are, we house the MPO, and then we take care of, as far as their employees and benefits. You know, we, again, we review their contracts against our procurement standards, but the MPO works for its own board, of which we're members, but they don't work directly for Metro.
And in terms of pending legislation at the state, there is some that deals with the MPO, but none of that's passed at this point, though.
Correct. To my knowledge, none of that has passed. And a lot of that, the legislation that I've read so far, really deals with the voting of that board that I just mentioned.
Right. How many it takes to bind the MPO and what they can do with...
Exactly. How they conduct their business to board and how...
That wouldn't affect the role of this commission, though.
No, it would not.
All right. That's my question.
Any other comments, questions on that? Okay. You have a little report?
We need to...
Well, we need to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A move we approve.
Yeah, we did. I'm sorry.
A move we approve.
Take it off. Okay, the motion is second to approve item number 18. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry. You have any comments?
Well, I would say, first of all, apologize for getting here just a little bit late. I was in the mayor's office, and we're meeting about... We're meeting with council members about their districts in particular, but I was also meeting with the head of the Finance Committee, Pride Moore, Bill Pride Moore, and about doing a presentation to the council regarding the capital improvements budget. And I know that I've spoken to the commission before about how we're changing our role in the capital improvements budget. The Metro Charter clearly states that the Planning Commission is supposed to put together the capital improvements budget, submit that to the administration, who then finalize it and submits it to the council. And in years past, I know that many of you have been here for a very long time, know that some much longer than others, know that that budget oftentimes is brought here with only days to review before it moves on. And we mean to change that. What we're trying to do is really a three-year program where this first year, we're trying to understand how all the various Metro departments put together long-range plans for capital improvements. We're working with all of the departments within Metro just to understand how they go about doing that today. Many of our larger departments have three-year plans, but a lot of our smaller departments just have a one-year plan. And so we're trying to work with those departments to get them to look further off, to extend that horizon beyond just a one-year plan, but to three, five, 10, 20-year plans. And then, that's what we plan to do this year. The next year, what we hope to do is work with all the various departments to, one, start to use the same language when we're talking about how we prioritize capital improvements. I know that sounds a little strange, but when you reference capital improvements projects and how you rank them with different weights and those different priorities are described in different ways, it becomes very hard to then judge whether the city's going to spend money on a water services, a capital improvements project versus a public works project, a fire hall versus a police station. So the second year is as much about working with the departments to help them develop their own 1, 3, 5, and 10, 20-year plans, but also about getting everybody to start using the same language and the same system that we input the data for those long-range plans. So that by the third year, when we're looking at capital improvements, that the council and the administration have hard data right there to look at to understand how to prioritize those projects, that the public sees it in a very transparent way so that they understand when projects are being prioritized, why they're being prioritized. And hopefully, we can start to move forward in year four, really. Well, I guess year three, in a way that's very transparent and that the public can understand what projects they should expect, not only that year, but in years two, three, and into the future. So we're spending a lot of time both putting together that program and allocating resources within the Planning Department to do that, but also in talking with the council. Because a lot of what we're talking about still has some subjectivity to it. You know, how do you weight the location of a sidewalk near a school versus a park as opposed to its proximity to the rest of the sidewalk network that exists? All those things have to be weighted in some way. And so, working with the community, working with the council, understanding the weight that we want to give those priorities will dictate a lot of how different projects fall on the priority list, so.
How much staff time is involved in this versus what we've done in the past?
A lot more. In the past, you know, being frank, there was little more than making sure that the paperwork was moving from one place to the next and getting here on time. Whereas now, for this first year, we're really spending a lot of time with the various departments. Finance Department and the mayor's office worked with us to send out an email to all of the departments and set up a survey for them to go in and fill out. But that survey and the letter came directly from Rich Rebling, Talia, and myself. And so that, I think, helped encourage the departments to participate in it. But we have one person, I would say, the majority of the time is being spent on working on the capital improvements budget, but I see that growing significantly over the next two years.
It might be a year-round person because whatever we approve and send out and approve, then they're going to be lobbying us into, for the next year, early on, to see why would they have to ask.
Do you have adequate resources to handle this additional capacity?
I will be asking for additional resources to handle this.
To handle the capital budget.
Yes, so...
Operating, maybe.
Yeah, be operating, but absolutely, we're going to have to ask for additional resources. One of the things that we also want to talk about is a chief financial officer, which Jeffrey Leach does a great job, but he really deals with our operating budget more than anything else, works with grants with the MPO as well to help them get through that process. But we need to be able to really understand the cost, the cost savings of a lot of what we're trying to also put into the capital improvements budget by understanding projects that Water Services has and understanding the projects that Public Works has on their list. And when we see the overlap of those, then elevating those projects and getting them done together, there's a cost savings to that. And we need to be able to articulate that because that should also have some relevance in where it is in the priority list. So there's a number of personnel that, if we're going to do this right, I think that we're going to need in the Planning Department. But at the end of the day, we believe that the city will see a much better return on their investment on capital improvements if we do it in this more thoughtful way.
So this has been done before largely by Finance Department or where?
It has. It's been a Finance Department-driven document to date.
So how did they weigh... Correct, but how did they weigh the priority of the projects?
You'd have to ask them. Yeah. How it's been weighted to date, I couldn't tell you for sure. Talia probably could tell you, but not at this level of detail and level of involvement. I think for the most part, and again, I'd let the Finance Department speak for themselves, but a lot of it's been just department-driven. They take on its face what the Public Works Department says the priorities are without comparing that against to Water Services or even from our perspective, without really comparing that to where we see not only growth occurring today as far as density and demands on that infrastructure, but also this commission and our department is able to see at least a little further into the future about where density is about to occur. And so that gives us a unique perspective in being able to focus those resources and go ahead and try to prepare our infrastructure for density and demands that we know are going to come.
Will these, the paper requests come in, you analyze those, but will you hold so-called hearings, allow them to come in and kind of lobby ahead of time as to why they think it's important?
The departments?
The department head.
Well, absolutely. No, we...
For those individual departments.
We see ourselves more as a facilitator to the departments about helping them get their long-range plans in line with... So we all have the same common vision, and that is the goals of Nashville Next. And so we're comparing everybody's long-range plans against that vision. But really, I don't imagine that we're the ones dictating how that's going to happen.
No, it's a approval, recommended approval or disapproval.
What we would hope is that we're facilitating the departments in their capital improvements budget, both in short and the long term, but helping them, again, all speak the same language, but ask about every project, how is that moving us towards our vision of Nashville that is expressed in Nashville Next? And so that's really what we're trying to do. So I don't want to leave the impression that we're the ones that are going to be saying, no, it's not that project, it's this other project, but that the departments themselves will develop their own long-range plans, but with that common vision that it's all being compared against. So I don't know if Greg's here tonight? Nope.
Other questions coming?
Stuart. I think this is a really good change. I mean, it's felt a little awkward to be getting these massive capital improvements budgets that, frankly, we don't really spend a lot of time with as commissioners, but we vote on. What this doesn't change is the ultimate deciders are elected officials in some ways.
No, absolutely.
Nothing we put in that budget gets funded until the Metro Council says it gets funded.
Correct. But I think it will make those decisions hopefully better, easier for the council to make and understand what they're... When they're passing that capital improvement plan, where the money's being spent, when that decision's being made, that if you are moving a project out of the priority, that hopefully you'll have, you'll be able to explain why, even though as a community we've agreed on these priorities and these projects are lined up in a particular way, why you might take them out of order. But I will say this, too. Things are going to be taken out of order because opportunities are going to present themselves that you don't know when you create that budget to begin with. Events are going to take place, like a water main's going to break, and that's going to change your priorities. You're going to have an opportunity or a development suddenly is going to come in and change the dynamics of an area, and therefore, you're going to need to adjust and change for that as well. So it'll have to be a flexible document. This is also why we're trying to give ourselves three years. This is also why we're trying to give ourselves three years to get to the finish line on this, because it's not a small task. But it is a major new initiative that we're trying to do in the department.
Other questions? Any other report from your end?
No, I think that's probably enough.
I'm gonna call on your council lady, but one question we have, are we meeting here again two weeks from now because of early election?
Kelly tells me not.
Back to regular place, okay. Council lady, anything?
All right. I'm not sure I'm working this.
I think it's on. They control it.
Just to report that the, the council did take the, the two inclusionary zoning bills that were written, 134 and 135, and deferred them to the first meeting of April with the intention of bringing that, them back, bringing back 133, which deals with the offsets and the incentives at the first meeting in April, so that it theoretically could track with the budget if we feel like it's ready at that point. We deferred the second part, which deals with the bonuses that council member, I mean, Commissioner G. brought up, that thought would require more time and thought. We deferred those indefinitely with the thought that, that it might take until fall to have that part thought through. So, that sort of separates the process, so we can focus on just the set aside piece of that. And, you know, we're not, we're not wed to absolutely having it be done in, in the shortest amount of time, but, but that was sort of the first time when we thought it would be possible to have it back and have it be on public hearing in time to be done by the time the budget was done. But if we need more time, we still have the possibility to do that, as long as we're thinking about it enough that we can get things into this upcoming budget, so that it can be implemented when it is completed. So, and I would defer to, to the Director to maybe let us know if it's gonna be re-referred to the Planning Commission, if, if their thoughts on how that process happens, that we reintroduce it on first reading, and then it comes back to the Planning Commission, or I would expect this group may want some input before then. So, I'd, I'd welcome your thoughts on that.
My, well, my thought has always been that you would pass first reading, and then both bills just get referred back here. One tracking, the first one, 133, tracking on a pace, so that it comes back in April for second reading and third reading, hopefully. There, because no meetings in June, so you make it effective July 1, when the new budget's in place. 134 needs to come back, and then we need to take a lot of time, and we need to set up public meetings. I was met with Kerry Logan and Bob earlier today, and we're talking about what, who should be in those meetings. And that becomes very difficult, because 134 is so comprehensive in the, in the items that it addresses in the code, that you can quickly get to a group that's almost unworkable. So, the way our meeting ended, council lady, was that we decided we needed to meet with you.
Okay.
And sit down and, and figure out what groups.
Okay.
It may be that 134 that we have to address in pieces, to get the right people at the table to be able to have a meaningful conversation.
Okay.
The, the people who are interested in lead bonuses being affected, versus the people who are interested in parking bonuses versus open space, those may be different groups.
One question before we get to you, Stuart. Are there bills on the state legislature been introduced that would affect this, our bills, 133 and 134?
Oh, there are bills that have been introduced to state legislature that aim to affect the ability of local governments to create restrictions to require workforce and affordable housing. Now, having said that, I believe that the way that this legislation is drafted, the current iteration of that bill would not affect what's, what is before the council today. I believe that it is written in such a way that even if the legislation that is in front of the state legislature were to pass, it would not prevent us from creating the incentive-based inclusionary zoning bill.
Wouldn't affect 133 or 134, either one?
I do not believe so. Not as it's written today. Things tend to change, as I'm sure Commissioner Stuart can tell you before they finish through the process, but as it's written today, I don't believe it does.
Yeah. Our, our zoning process is, is one that contains more conditions and discussions than it did a few years ago, obviously. The fact that we don't have something called an adopted plan, it doesn't seem to me to mean, I'm just testing this out, when we don't have anything specific in front of us, it doesn't seem to me to mean that the idea and ideal of promoting affordable housing can't play some part in our discussions about discretionary zone changes. Am I right about that?
Yes. I mean, it doesn't prevent us from doing that.
On an ad hoc basis, even.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why I think that the way that we proposed it, I mean, the council can approve this bonus into the zoning code and put the trigger at a rezoning if they choose to. Just because they haven't adopted the general plan, I don't, I think those are very different subjects, and I think that's what you're expressing, that whether they adopt the general plan and then therefore become obligated to make sure that all zonings follow what the general plan is and the triggers, that the legal implications of doing that are very different than amending your zoning code to create its own triggers into these bonus programs that would require participation in bonus programs. But, the legal department probably should speak to that, not me.
It's Mother Town.
If you like to.
Other questions or comments, and thank for the good of the city. Journey.
Happy birthday, Rick Jessica. It's Jessica's birthday today.
Oh, is it?
Why she's not here?